All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 17th Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, we're not going to hold the meeting. I'm going to recess the meeting for just a minute, okay? So, to those that are out there on TV watching us live, just give us a few minutes. We have a lot of people in the audience in here, and we need to sort a few things out. So, we're going to stand in recess for a few minutes, and I'm just going to address the audience. And we know you guys are here for this, probably all the same thing, for the schools and the budget this hearing this evening. This room is way over capacity. We can only have the people that are sitting in the chairs in this room. The aisles have to be open. So, we also, we have a meeting room next door to this. So, people are welcome to go in there. We can actually put this up on TV on there, live streaming in there. We're going to try to, anyway, on our whiteboard in there. So, for those of you that are here that want to be here and hear what's being said, you can be in the other room. If we have larger families that are here, and maybe a couple of you could leave, and someone stay behind that's a family member, to help ease the number of people that are in this room, that would be acceptable as well. But we do have to get to, basically, the number of people in the seats. It's a fire code issue. Also, this building is a little bit old. I don't know how long that floor is going to stay upright with that many people on it. Just to add a little bit of levity to the situation. We only have about 20 people signed up to actually speak this evening. So, for those of you that are here to speak, of course, you do need to stay behind so that we can call you up this evening when we open the public hearing. So, we'll take a few minutes. I don't know how you guys want to sort this out individually. You're going to have to have that conversation, but we can't have this many people in this room, what it boils down to. First order of business. Call the meeting back in order, and the first order of business, as always, is an invocation and pledge of allegiance. And before we jump into that, thank you to those that left the room and got us able to have this meeting, and to everyone for coming out tonight. It's very rare that we see this many people here. This evening, we have Pastor Eric Fretz here from Bridge Church, I believe. Do we throw him out? Oh, there he is. All right.
He did voluntarily.
Toss him out. Good evening.
Come to you in the name of Jesus, asking for wisdom and discretion. I just pray for heavenly solutions to earthly problems, Lord. We thank, we thank you for each and every board member and the community that they represent. And, Lord, we just ask that you would be the center of every decision made over this region, this county. We pray that your kingdom would come, and your will would be done in Currituck County in Jesus' name. And now, would you join me for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder from the county attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
If we do vote on the budget tonight, due to being a county employee, I can't vote on something that would pertain to me receiving a raise if the bandage cola, I guess is what we call it, I'm in the 4% category, so I wouldn't be able to vote on that. And if the sheriff's budget, I know in the past, per the school of government...
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll just have you walk out briefly, hold just a mock vote of the sheriff's budget, and then you come back, and you can vote on the sheriff's budget, but just to show that there's no conflict of interest, or anything like that.
Like we did last, okay?
Like we did last year, yes.
That's it for me.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other conflicts of interest? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next up is the approval of the agenda, and we have to add a closed session this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11 to preserve attorney-client privilege in the matter of Judith Ayers versus Currituck County Department of Social Services, and I would add that at the end after the special meeting of the Outer Banks Sewer Water.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move out of the consent agenda, the resolution approving the exhibition use and discharge of pro-attorneys at 145 Indian Town Road, Shawburn, North Carolina, on Friday, June the 28th, 2024, and move that under New Business, Item 4.
Okay. And then, Item 5 will be the consent agenda. Okay. All right. Can we have a second? Right, please. You made a motion to amend. You made a motion to amend further. Do we need another second, or is that? That wasn't really a second. It was two amendments.
Was there a second? You made the motion, and then we needed a second.
There was a motion to amend.
I'll second.
Okay.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next up, as always, is public comments. Hopefully, we didn't... So, public comment is a little bit different than the public hearing. So, I have four people that are here for public comment this evening. Your comments are limited to three minutes. We have a light system for those of you who have not been here before, green, yellow, and red, and in red, your time is up. When you do come up, we need you to give us your name and address, and the reason you're here, obviously. I'm going to call out some names and just make sure we have those individuals in the room. Do we have Georgian Forehand in here, Foreland? We do? Okay. How about Julie Morgan? All right. Donna Robertson? That was one of them? And Sam Miller?
Sam Miller was in the hall.
He's in the hall. There he is. Okay.
Donna's here.
Donna's here.
She might be in the other room. Yeah.
She left, I think.
Okay.
She might be in the other room.
She got on the elevator.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. All right. So, first up is Georgian Foreland. If I got that right, Foreland?
Forehand.
Forehand. Good. Hello there. How are you? All right.
Good evening, Board of Commissioner members. My name is Georgia Forehand, and my twin brother Emmett and I are eight years old. We just finished second grade at Central Elementary School. I would like to share my story about our year in second grade, so you know how important teachers are, and why you should give the school the money they need to have great teachers. When we started second grade, we were so excited to see our friends and for all the new things we could learn. When things, then things got bad. We had a teacher, and then she quit in October. Then, we had another teacher. She quit in November. We had no certified teacher for half of the year. Not having a teacher was really hard on us. Our mom and the counselor told us it wasn't our fault, but it felt like it was. Sometimes, my brother and I would cry, and we didn't want to go to school anymore. We didn't understand why no one wanted to be our teacher. Do you know we were supposed to be taught a raise at the beginning of the year? No one taught us a raise at the, and that wasn't fair. In January, we got a, a new certified teacher, and she stayed for the rest of the year. Ms. Scott is a wonderful teacher. She's taught me how to add three-digit numbers. She taught me how to be a better writer. I even wrote about the life cycle of a koala bear. At the, the best part is she taught me how to be a better reader, and now I love reading. I even got a Rising Readers Award at the end of the year award ceremony. Currituck is a great place to grow up and have the best school. It's important. Please give the school the funding they need to keep the great teachers. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right. Great job. Thank you. How about Julie Morgan? Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of the schools and the budget today. My name's Julie Morgan. I reside at 111 Bay Leaf Drive. There have been many different stories about money being promised or not, money that was earmarked or was not, and I would like to put that aside and just share my story in hopes that we can move forward with a solution. I just finished my first year as a full-time teacher at Central Elementary. Prior to this, I was a TA for two years, and for the three years prior to that, I was a teacher at Pillmore Preschool. As a full-time mother of four children ages seven to 14 that are also in the county schools, my career path was ideal. I was able to learn from tenured teachers, find my own groove as an educator, and have the grace of experience by the time I was in charge of a classroom myself. The thought of losing even one single teacher, teacher's aide should worry you all, not just because it would be one less one-on-one time with our students, not just because a TA is a vital piece of our educational team, and not just because we all should want more educators with our kids and not less. No, the biggest fear that I have is the loss of the development track that I myself took. Do we want educators that are ready to hit the ground running, ones that have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly in classrooms, or do we want those to go with the sink-or-swim method? Throwing first-year educators into the classroom setting is just that. The dropout statistics bear this. I can tell you that my time as a TA gave me the guidance to handle my first year as a teacher far better than any professional or college class could have prepared me for. As with our family, and I'm sure yours, budgets have gotten harder than ever to navigate. Just as we must decide where our priorities lie, so shall you. I'd like to leave you with this tonight. Teachers are not just a budget-line item on your charts. We aren't simply a rounding error when it comes to the millions the county chooses to invest. We are the ones who spend eight hours a day, five days a week, for 10 months of the year with the children that are all of our future. We don't make much money, but that's not the point. Please find it in yourselves to not only make the tough calls, but to make the right calls. Keep teachers employed, add to the schools, and don't take the precious few resources that we do have. Thank you all for your time. I look forward to hearing what you decide, and invite you all to spend time in our schools, our classroom, namely, my own. I'd love to see you all. Thank you for your time. I'm Julie Morgan, and I am the Currituck County Beginning Teacher of the Year.
All right. Thank you. All right. Last up is Mr. Sam Miller. Is he still out in the hall? Good evening, Sam.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Sam Miller. I reside at 150 Baxter Estates Road in Moayak. I didn't realize it was going to be quite popular tonight. I just got back from vacation in Pigeon Forge. It was a great time, but I came tonight because I was able to go on vacation because one of your staff went above and beyond the week before last, Will Rumsey. And we're working on a project up in Moayak, finishing up some things with some sewer connections and pieces. And the sewer department, like a lot of things, are challenging right now, and in doing so, they didn't really have the staff or the time to get there. And I talked to us, Will, I said, "I'm really in a bind. I've got some people that are going to be homeless if I don't get this done, and I've got a family that I'm supposed to go to town with, and, you know, you're married, you've got a wife, you can't, I can't tell her I can't go."
You're going to be homeless, too.
I said, "Just tell me how, how we can get this done, and I'll do whatever. I'll hire another engineering firm to come in and do the inspection or do whatever." I said, "You know, Roderick is busy, and I know you all want to see it because you're going to own it at the end of the day. It's infrastructure that the county owns at the end of the day." And long and short of it, he said, "I'll call you tonight." He called me that night about 6:00. He said, "Can you be there at 6:00 AM? So, we'll be there, ready for you." So, we got up early. We got everything set. We pre-tested everything. He got there at 6:00. I said, "I'll have you out of here in an hour and a half." An hour and 15 minutes later, he was real pleased with what we had did because there was some additional testing that we didn't realize that the county needed. So, we had to rent the equipment and do that stuff, and we did that would have been a week ago from this past Friday. And he was on to his next meeting at 9:00, but came in on his own time, came in ahead doing those things. He's always been a gentleman to work with, but just went above and beyond. And I want to make sure you all know, and, you know, things are challenged sometimes, but you do have some really great people, and Will's one of them. And I'm thankful for what he did in helping getting those things done, and those people who could move in are happy, too. So, just want to let you know about somebody who did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sam.
I'll pass that on to Ashley, the Director of Alamo Regional Health Service.
Well, I was actually going to send it on next to Ken Griffin. I have an email prepared. I'm going to send out, send to him as well, so that he can have that, and hopefully, that'll end up in Will's file for when review time comes.
All right. Great. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item this evening, that was all we had signed up. I'm going to close public comment and open the Commissioner's Report, and I'm going to start over with Mr. Owen Ethers this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the high school graduation Friday ago, and I was really impressed with the quality of the seniors that graduated. And Mr. Robert Griffin gave the keynote address, and he did an excellent job. And I hope those students took note of what he said to them because he was speaking from the voice of experience.
Thank you, sir. Kevin, anything for you this evening?
I also attended the graduation. Owen had a seat in the distinguished guest section. I had to stand in a black uniform, but I was at work, but it's all good. It was a great, it was a great ceremony. Dr. Durham did a great job, his staff, Dr. Lutz, all, everybody there. It was well organized. There was no issues, even though he asked people not to hit the cowbells and the airhorns. They were pretty respectful about it, so it wasn't too bad. But the high school kid, I guess it's Hunter Morgan? Am I saying it wrong? Right? He did an excellent job singing. It was just, it was really well-run, smooth. Everybody behaved like they should. It was super hot. I think we only had one or two with some medical issues due to the heat because you have, there's a lot of elderly people there as well. Besides, I'm, no, I'm just kidding. But they, it was, it was very nice and very professionally ran, and a good job. I think it was 280-some graduates. It's neat to see all the ones that graduated with honors and going into the military and the different stuff. And Robert Griffin, which Robert, I think, was a senior when I was a freshman. He graduated my sister, who, she just retired from the school system 30 years. But Robert did an excellent job on his speech, very, very professional. I also attended the retirees at Currituck Middle Monday, the following Monday. That was very well-run event as well, so good job to you guys. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Paul, anything this evening?
Yes. I, too, was at the high school graduation. Again, kudos to the team. It went very well. And should be Dr. Griffith. What a keynote address. I truly enjoyed what he said to the kids, and I agree, I hope the students were paying attention. But the best part about the whole thing is when he actually praised for the graduating class. So, kudos for him to do that. He echoed my sentiments exactly. And while I wasn't wearing a long, black-sleeved shirt like you were, I was in a coat and tie, and that was pretty hot, too. But it was a great group. Again, I was wondering when Morgan's going to be playing at Morris Farms?
He was there this weekend.
Because I'm telling you, he was the real deal. It was, I mean, it was incredible. Anyway, that's all I had.
All right. Thank you. Selena, anything this evening?
No report tonight.
All right. How about you, Ms. Kenny? Anything this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the last several months, I've attended Zoom meetings as a member of the Commission on the Future of North Carolina Elections, sponsored by the Carter Center. As the Chairman of the Committee on Campaign Finance and Qualifications for Candidates, along with Advisor Dr. Chris Cooper of Western Carolina University, our committee will be discussing our findings in July at Catawba College, along with several other committees. Our discussions have centered around redistricting, unaffiliated voters, candidates, ballot access. The purpose of the commission is to ensure the public that North Carolina elections are fair, safe, and secure, and the commission hopes to release their findings before the general election this year. Last week, I also attended the quarterly meeting of the County Risk Group of North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. This is the group that covers our county for workman's compensation and liability and property coverage, and I'm happy to report that both pools are in good financial condition. The group not only offers coverages for counties, but also offers free services to counties. A few of the services include HR helplines, cybersecurity, risk management programs for the Sheriff's Department, and county college. The Risk Group is always looking for ways to serve the counties better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Alamo Regional Health, of course, you know, they, they have health departments in all their surrounding counties, including Currituck County, and we have our health department right over there next to the courthouse building. Alamo Regional Health recently was able to hire a nurse practitioner to come, and it's going to be dedicated to Currituck County, starting, I think, this week or next week. And the nice thing about that, it gives the citizens another option for some healthcare in the county, for sick calls, physicals, prescriptions, whatever. The problem we, well, what I have heard over the years is we need more healthcare, more options in Currituck County. We've been bringing in, I'm on the Alamo Regional Health Board, we've been bringing in nurse practitioners to come in and work for the county here. The problem is, is when they come in, they want to see patients, they want to stay busy, and they do not have enough people coming to see them, so they leave. So, we're going to try to see about getting this individual, maybe moving around the county a little bit, maybe to the Outer Banks, because it's hard enough to get the, with the healthcare needs out there, it's hard enough to get somebody in the county here, and then we need to try to give them enough patience or enough activity to want to stay in the county here. So, keep that as an option in mind. If you need a physical, if you're sick, you can walk in on the sick. They'll take any insurances out there. They'll take you, they'll sign you up, physicals, whatever, prescriptions. They can do pretty much, you know, a lot of things, or they can do referrals for x-rays or whatever. So, just keep that in consideration. Use them. It's right, right by the courthouse over here. It's not just, it's not just for what you thought a health department was years ago. It's really changed and evolved. So, please keep that in mind. I want to keep the nurse practitioner busy in the county here. And then, secondly, I just wanted to mention, I'd heard somebody come up and talk about my, my mother actually was a TA in Currituck County for many years, and she retired as a teacher's assistant in Currituck County. Well-respected lady, put a long time in the county, and so I know all about TAs, talking to my mom about them, so, and I appreciate them, because my mom was important. And just lastly, too, I know Robert Griffin spoke, and his father was my math teacher in high school, and was, he was a great man, too. So, anyways, that's all I had to say tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. You had something else?
Well, I'm going to try to talk. I've been battling laryngitis for quite some time. I just, first of all, want to thank this board for helping me move the opioid task force into an advisory board tonight. It is important work. I have spoken with several of the members who were on the task force that want to transition to the advisory board, and I look forward to that. I think it is a necessary group to help us stop this opioid destruction that is going on in our families. So, I look forward to that, and I want to thank this board for the efforts in helping me move this into a very important stage tonight. I also would like to say that Robert Griffin is a stand-up guy. Taught with him for, oh, 20-something, let's just go, years at the high school, and attended every graduation for 31 years, and I know the work that it takes to go in there. So, congratulations to the, to the graduates and to the teachers out there. I know you're looking forward to some much-needed rest this summer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Nothing from me this evening. This evening, how about you, Rebecca? Anything from the manager?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, our Independence Day celebration will be held at Historic Corolla Park on July 4th, Thursday, July 4th. The boat ramp facility and air-up facility will be closed from 3:00 PM on the 3rd until 7:00 AM on the 5th. Also, wanted to recognize Mary Beth Noons, our Emergency Management Director. She was recently appointed by Governor Cooper to the State Emergency Response Commission, and she will be representing emergency managers in North Carolina on the CIRC. So, congratulations to Mary Beth.
Wow. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And out next up is the county attorney.
Yes. Thank you. There is a Board of Adjustment meeting this Wednesday at 7:00, right here in the historic courthouse. And today, the real estate closing was finalized for lots 10 and 11 in Maple Commerce Park to Elizabeth City State University, so we're really excited about that.
Thank you. All right. Next up is administrative reports, and we have North Carolina Fish and Wildlife Officer Jeff Duran here, and he's probably out in the hall somewhere.
There he is.
There he is. Come on in.
Dorn.
Dorn?
Dorn.
Dorn. All right. Good evening, sir.
How y'all doing?
Welcome. How are you?
Good. I wasn't aware that the whole county would be here today. Otherwise...
All for you.
Yeah. Perfect. So, I talked with Kevin a little bit ago, just about some of the complaints that we get often from the county. Starting, my name's Officer Dorn. I'm a game warden with North Carolina Fish and Wildlife, Wildlife Resource Commission. I cover Camden and Currituck County right now. We don't currently have a Currituck officer. It's actually here to man you, really. The reason I came in today was kind of just to address some of the questions we get off in, and I don't know if you guys receive any phone calls or not. I direct everyone to you when they call me, so sorry if they do. A lot of the things that people have complaints about are out of my control and out of my agency's control. A lot of those things come down to county ordinances, county laws. The biggest complaint we get are people shooting from the roadway and people shooting in unsafe directions towards houses. That's what I wanted to address and kind of explain how you guys play a part in that. Currently, in Currituck County, it is illegal to shoot from state routes 1140, 1218, 1227, 1239, 1248, and then 1249 through 1253. Those roads are idlet roads, South Mills Road, Northwest Backwoods Road, Baxter Lane, and pretty much all of Gibbs Woods. Excluding those roads, it's completely legal for someone in Currituck County to be standing flat-footed on the double-heel line and shoot a deer running across a field with a rifle, provided they are outside of 300 yards from occupied dwelling without permission. With a shotgun, all bets off. They can kind of do what they want. We get a lot of calls about this, obviously. I think everyone's well aware, South Mills is, not South Mills, South Mills is growing also, but Moayak is growing at a pretty rapid pace. There's a lot of people there. Our goal is to prevent any negative interactions between hunters and the constituents of Currituck County, i.e., I don't want anyone getting shot, right? County. I don't want anyone getting shot, right? My job and what I can do is kind of limited to a person or a dwelling being injured. So what we all would assume to be a general kind of poor thing to do, which would be shoot between houses or shoot in a place that's occupied by a lot of people, legally, I have no footing to have any sort of interaction with that. Where you guys come into play is if there was law passed in Currituck County saying you can't hunt on private land without permission from the landowner, or you can't shoot flat-footed from the center line of the road, both of which would be great things to have in law here in the county, then that's something I could enforce, right? So we have about, last I checked, it was 70 counties in the state that have road hunting laws, meaning you cannot shoot from the W line of a road. Again, great law to have on the books, but if it's not there, there's nothing that I can do to enforce that. I will keep directing phone calls of complaints and questions, comments, concerns to you guys, but until something's done, that's all I can really do legally as far as the county goes. We do have a gentleman that's interested in coming here to be the game warden in Currituck County. He won't be here for another, I don't know, year about? What's that?
Year.
I think 15 years.
He has a six-month training protocol, and after that six months, he could start in the county. They still have three months left in their academy, maybe a little less now. They graduate at the end of August, or he should be here at the end of August. So anyway, we're looking at some time before there's a full-time person in Currituck County. So right now, it's just me and a gentleman in Manio that cover Currituck, as well as our sergeant and our lieutenant. Again, we get called out often for these situations. I'm sure you all know during hunting season what that looks like. I'm very pro-hunting, I'm very pro-following the law. I'm also pro-common sense, which is not super common anymore, unfortunately. So that's, that's pretty much all I have. I just came to address that, let you all know. If you have any questions or comments or anything, for me, I can definitely pass that on to our folks, but.
So we have, you know, the purple stripes and...
Yes, sir.
But, but I think every time that's been an interaction, we've always called the Sheriff's Department from enforcement.
So there's two ways that we go about that, typically with private land. One would be posted signs, and one would be purple paint. Purple paint has to be every 100 yards, has to be between three and five feet tall, has to be eight inches in length, no width, those purple marks around the whole property boundary, 360 degrees around the property. When you go to court with that, which we do, when we trust, when we charge someone with trespassing or hunting on posted property, the first question we get asked is, is the property properly posted? Try to say that three times fast, very difficult. Unless a landowner tells me, yes, it is properly posted all around the property line, I can't testify to that. That's kind of how that goes in court. The other side of that is you have people that own, you know, 10 acres, 20 acres, 100 acres, 1,000 acres. A farmer doesn't want to go out and spend however much money it is to buy however much purple paint or signs are needed, and then build infrastructure on the edge of his field, road frontage, swampland, to post that property. Again, common sense would say you ask someone to be on their private property. The law says, sure, you know, if you don't have it posted, there's nothing you can do with it. You call the sheriff's office all you want, which is fine, they'll call us, but if I get there and it's not properly posted, what's that?
No, I mean, sometimes we do with the sheriff's office, like if they're trespassing.
Yeah, right.
Obviously, I mean, we, like you said, I mean, we've charged people before for trespassing if they didn't have written permission or the landowner or whatever, but we eventually always call.
Right. And that's if the property, property is properly...
Properly posted.
If it's not, the only thing I can say is, hey, Steve doesn't want you on his property anymore, or Farmer John doesn't want you on his property anymore. But again, in order to trespass someone off the property, which you all know as well, I need to know who it is, I need to know what property they're posted from or trespassed from, and I need to know the property owner, and they have to, it's kind of at their behest. So if they don't want it done, or they say, I don't really want to get involved, I just don't want people hunting, kind of limits ties our hands as far as what we can do. Whereas, when you have counties that have private property laws, which are, if you want to hunt on private property, need permission of the landowner, that gives me kind of carte blanche to ask people, hey, do you have permission to be here? Well, who gave you permission to be here? Do you have a phone number or contact number for them, or even know who that person is? Because often we'll get, yeah, you know, the farmer told me I can hunt here. Well, the farmer's been dead for 10 years, so who gave you permission to be here, you know? We run into that very, very often. It's really the biggest thorn in my side for the hunting season. I get about 250 phone calls. We do have a data management system now. They pull those reports every year as far as hunter interactions, complaints we get, and compile those. And the biggest thing we get are trespassing complaints during the hunting season, I mean, by far and away. And that's duck hunting, deer hunting, bear hunting, everything. People like to hunt, which is great. I love to hunt, it's kind of my thing, obviously, considering the job. But in order to do that effectively and reasonably within our county, I think there needs to be a little more proactive laws on the county's part to prevent what could happen in, in many situations. And it does happen. Every year, someone has a negative interaction physically with a hunter, whether it be a house, a car, or a person injured. Whether or not someone means to, it's just kind of the nature of the game if there's not laws in place to prevent that from happening.
I think it would be wise to, let's go ahead and get, because dummy me, I thought that was already...
Yeah, she's been making...
We've been working on, we've been working on the shooting, the shooting ordinance and some other ones.
Right.
That we've talked about as well, too.
Double line, though, that was...
Yeah, there's a lot of different ordinances, but most of it goes through session law. So unless it's ratified through session law, there's nothing I can really do for that, with the exception of Camden County. As you know, you have a game commission. The game commission does pay the wildlife commission in some way. I'm really not 100% sure how that works out, so don't quote me on that. They pay the wildlife commission to some effect in order for us to upkeep those laws.
I think we pay like 7,000, Currituck Game Commission pays like seven grand a year.
It's one of two counties in the state that actually pays the wildlife commission directly for enforcement of their laws. With that being said, the better avenue would be to ratify something through session law. It goes into our books. Right now, if you look at the, has anyone ever seen our digest?
I have.
Yeah, I've just seen one or two. If you look in that digest, has all...
Strangest places.
What's that? Yeah, this was, yeah, I've got them all over my house. If you look at that digest, it has local laws written down. Currituck has a good section of local laws, just some of the basic, you know, 500 yards from another house, or from another registered blind, your duck hunting laws predominantly. And then everything else says, see Currituck Game Commission for further laws. If you look at the Currituck Game Commission website, the entirety of the website has more rules and regulations than the whole local law section of our digest, which is great, but not if you are the layperson that's just trying to hunt in Currituck County with family or friends or what have you. I guarantee you, if I ask 90% of my hunters, they've never read the Currituck Game Commission rules and regulations. Now, if one of the six lines in the Currituck local laws says you can't shoot from any right-of-way in Currituck County, that's pretty, pretty blatant. There's also no reason to. You don't need to jump out of your truck on 158 and be able to shoot across the highway at a deer running mock Jesus across a field. I say that because I've seen it happen over and over and over and over and over again.
I was going to say, I know a couple of people you might have wrote tickets to for doing that.
Yeah, I know a couple of them, yeah. No one in this room. I haven't looked behind me, so I can't say that confidently, but they all seem like decent people.
All right.
So like, the rule we have that you got to be, a rifle's got to be 10 feet off the ground, we need to get that into session law?
Yes. Again, a lot of, I'm trying to think of how to say this appropriately. A lot of the laws that we deal with were written with good intent, but are written in a way that are not super enforceable by us. So, for example, discharging a center fire rifle being 300 feet or yards, I would have to look at the exact writing, unless there's a sufficient backstop of trees. The question I would posit and what is asked to me in court is, what is a sufficient backstop of trees? Because one tree will stop a bullet. And if that, to me, is sufficient, that's sufficient. And then I have to argue that in court. Well, one tree's not sufficient. Well, how many trees is sufficient? Can we plant 12 pine trees? And so if it says you cannot discharge a center fire rifle within 300 feet of a house, period, way more enforceable than without a sufficient backstop of trees. I understand it was written, you know, laws like that were written 50 years ago, 60 years ago, 70 years ago, when your population in Currituck County was a quarter of what it is now.
Basically, this room.
Yeah, right, right, pretty much. We just moved to South Mills, for example. Every law written for Camden, and I understand this isn't Camden, but I lived in Currituck for four and a half years. Every law written in Camden was with the amount of people that were living in Camden at the time. Every law written for Currituck was with the amount of people living in Currituck in mind. Moayak, I don't know how many people have moved there in the last 10 years, but...
A lot.
A significant number, right? If you look at the Facebook page, people love to talk about it. But that population's much bigger now than it was, and the laws kind of need to be reevaluated with that population in mind. So to answer your question, the long way is, yes, if you have a law that you think would be a decent law to have in there as far as distance or, you know, what have you, that's something you'd have to discuss as a county and then put into session law. Once that's in there, we can enforce that without needing to call the game commission, without needing to call the sheriff's office. That's all administratively addressable by us.
Thank you.
Who's the easiest to get to the house, you or a sheriff's deputy?
Say it again.
What are the odds of getting you to the house or a deputy?
Um, I mean, it really depends. During hunting season, I'm out, I'm out every day. Someone is out every day, so we have...
The point is, there's one of you and there's at least two of them.
Right. The benefit to these laws is I don't need to necessarily be there. If you can give me a truck or a name or a person, anything like that, or if I have a law to go by, it's, it would blow your mind how many times I show up to a call, can find the person, identify the thing that's happened, identify that it's ethically the wrong thing to happen, and still can't do anything. Because laws and ethics are very different.
So you didn't witness the event.
Most of the time.
You get a call, you show up, you know a license plate, you know a truck, you know a driver, you know a guy.
Correct.
The homeowner's still going to have to be there, I would imagine, as part of the legal process.
Yes and no. If I can get all of those things and I can prove that, right, there's a burden of proof on my end, but if I can prove that, the homeowner doesn't need to be there at all, unless it is as the laws are right now. I need the homeowner.
I'm just saying.
Right.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything further?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Interesting.
What's that?
Oh, interesting.
Okay. Yep. Learn something new every day. All right. Next up is public hearings, item number one, public hearing and possible adoption of the annual budget for fiscal year 2425. With that, turn it over to our manager. She's already presented this.
Sure. So I just wanted to run through a couple slides. Again, I wanted to highlight the services that we are required to provide by statute, and then the services that we value.
We don't have to provide tax collection?
Uh, no, we do not.
Okay.
We do not.
All right.
We have, we have a tax administrator who was here earlier this evening.
We value him greatly.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right. So ultimately, these, these services that we are statutorily required to provide, and then also those which we choose to provide, manifest themselves into the budget.
Yeah.
All right, let's see. So the fiscal year 25 general fund budget that you have before you tonight is in the amount of $83,133,069. This is an increase of $1,193,620 over the proposed budget. The vast majority of, of this increase is due to receipt of our property and liability insurance and workers' compensation premiums. We received that on June 10th. So that's, that is the vast majority of that expense.
Okay.
So we'll run through the, the changes in the revenues. This is in the, the handout that you all received. So we increased the deed stamp excise tax by $250,000, increased our Article 39 sales tax by 900,000, not, by $900,000, and our investment earnings by $30,785. And then here you can see our changes in expenditures. So our workers' compensation premiums across the general fund increased. We also made a technical correction. There was some longevity increases that were not properly accounted for, so that correction was made. Those are anticipated longevity increases. We increased the deed stamp excise stamp fee to $125,000. There's a technical correction to salary in the public safety building budget. There is a decrease in funding in the planning budget for elimination of the development liaison position. The $859,000 for insurance, that's the property and liability insurance. There was a decrease in the fire services contingency in the fire services budget, and a decrease in the transfer from the general fund to the fire vehicle replacement fund, and then an increase to the Corolla Fire District Fund. All right. I just wanted to call out the Corolla Fire Service Fund. There's a reduction in the special district tax from nine cents to eight cents per $100 valuation. This decreases the tax levy by $345,294. The increase in the transfer from the general fund is in the amount of $348,307, and this transfer from the general fund provides for EMS salaries and then the Corolla volunteer fire budget. So there are additional changes within the other funds, but those are, as you can see from the handout, really limited to workers' compensation and longevity changes. Did you have any questions about any changes from proposed to adopted?
Doesn't appear so.
Okay.
You explained it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments or anything from the board? All right. This is a public hearing, and as such, the public can speak at these. We have several people signed up this evening. I would ask you to limit your comments to get through as many people as we can. It can take quite a while to get through this. As with our public comment that we have at the beginning in the meetings, we do need you to come up and introduce yourself and tell us who you are and where you're from. And the first person I have sign up this evening is Dr. Woods. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I don't think I have a three-minute time limit. We did plan all of our plans around three minutes. I just thought I'd let you all know that before we started. I'm Matt Lutz, 2958 Kerituck Highway. I'm superintendent of Currituck County Schools. Good evening, and I wanted to speak to the Board of Commissioners and commend and thank you for your foresight and support of our public schools. During the 2020-2021 school year, the school system developed a district-wide strategic plan, along with the curricular strategic plan. The community, along with the board that I'm speaking to, helped to develop the strategic plan that included becoming accredited by Cognia. Full accreditation for the district will occur sometime after June 30th. I would like to note that we were one of only two school systems out of 115 in the state that developed a strategic plan during the 2020-2021 school year. The plan was to support our students and staff. Teachers were needed to meet unfunded mandates, keep class sizes reasonable, and provide a robust choice of electives, such as music and art. Teacher assistants provided much-needed support in reading and K1 instruction, and instructional coaches were added to provide support and ensure that our teachers provide the best education possible for our families. Why am I thanking you? Because you had the vision to support needed positions, to help grow our community into the premier public education system in the state. It was a pleasant surprise when COVID ESER funds dropped from the federal government in late spring of 2021 for our school district. We received the second-least amount of federal funds in the state, only surpassed by, only one who gets less is Camden. We were elated to know that we had a plan in place prior to receiving federal monies developed with the help of this board that wouldn't continue, that, we were elated to know that we had a plan in place prior to receiving federal monies so that we could continue after the COVID money dried up, because that financial commitment had already been made. Our conversations, both internally and externally, with some leadership from the county, was focused on how we could stretch the local dollar and how fortunate we were that we had a place... had a place that, and we had a plan in place once the funds expired. We were probably one of the few districts in the entire state that actually had a plan in place prior to COVID funds dropping to support our students' education, and this county commissioner group right before me was the ones who supported it. I've been asked, what are the results to show a differentiation from other school systems? First, let me say that our preliminary testing results from the 2324 school year, I hope everyone hears this, show a significant increase in school performance. So I'm saying that on camera, so I'm looking right at you, telling you, we're going to get that bump that we've been looking for, and we can't wait for the official results to be made public this fall. The best part about the improvement is we know why this occurred. This wasn't an accident. We didn't just wake up and go, oh, think we got lucky today, or the kids did really well. This group that came in here, the 175 educators, they made it happen. And we didn't happen by accident. That was the great part, because you all supported and funded this. You don't make up for students missing eighteen months of instruction due to ridiculous state mandates during a COVID overnight. Strong classroom instruction provided by outstanding teachers, dedicated teacher assistants, and robust professional development provided by instructional coaches are moving the meter. So let me backtrack for a moment. When the ESER federal funds arrived, almost every district in the state added intervention teachers. They added reading TAs and instructional coaches. We didn't add anything. This was already our plan, supported by you, the Board of Commissioners, through the property evaluation in 2021. And you all received those notes from our board with the documented in different presentations and us coming to joint meetings and agreeing to that. We'll touch on that. Think about it. How many boards of commissioners in the state can say they supported public education with the foresight you did? You recognize that as the second-fastest-growing county in the state, one blessed enough to be the least distressed fiscally as well, that public education is the backbone of a strong community. Historically, Currituck County Schools have been viewed as a solid system that is bereft of the typical behaviors seen from much of the country. In fact, where else, we're going to mention his name now for the fourth time tonight, could Robert Griffin say a prayer at graduation and no one called the ACLU? The people in this room represent just how important your decision is when you decide how to vote on the budget presented to you tonight. We have grown over 500 students over the past five years. This type of growth is unprecedented. We need your support now more than ever. We are asking that you keep your commitment to funding the 25 positions that you agreed to during the property reevaluation of 2021. The Board of Commissioners has repeatedly stated, when you need something from us, just ask. Our current fund balance is under half a million dollars, and it's not from fiscal mismanagement. To be clear, we are asking that you keep your commitment and provide the level of funding that Currituck County Board of Commissioners has traditionally provided. Thank you.
Is a point of clarity, Dr. Lutz?
Yes, Mr. Bama.
In context, when you need something, just ask. The point of reference that that was specifically referring to was the fund balance that the school system was keeping and retaining that at some points got to be pretty excessive. The comment was, if something fails and the school system needs it, and we've demonstrated that, all the school system had to do is ask, and we-
Tape delay.
I know. And those funds were then allocated. That was not for operational expenses.
Again, I had-
Just be accurate in what we're presenting.
I believe, sir, that was completely, that is how we have always taken that, I guess how it can be left for interpretation. But again, we're just asking for the commitment that was made with the 2021 property reeval for those funds to line up back to our school system and support it that way. Thank you.
Next up, Christine Hodges.
Good evening. My name is Christine Hodges. My address is 2958 Carrottoke Highway, Currituck, North Carolina. I am a resident of Currituck County and a proud product of Currituck County Schools. I currently serve as the Director of Curriculum Instruction for Currituck County Schools, and this year marked my 32nd year in education. In the spring of 2021, after multiple meetings with the then-county manager, Ben Stike Leather, and joint meetings with the Board of Commissioners, Superintendent Dr. Matt Lutz made a request to the Board of Commissioners for additional funding above the standard funding formula used to appropriate operating expenses for the school district. The funding request was to specifically support the addition of 12 new classroom teachers to help with increasing class sizes, particularly in the northern schools, 10 teacher assistants to specifically target literacy instruction in grades II-V, and 2.5 instructional coaches to ensure that an instructional coach provided support to all elementary and middle schools. The commissioners were all in favor of the fiscal commitments to these positions to the tune of one million, two-hundred-ninety-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars for the 2021-22 school year. Minutes from the joint meeting held on March 23rd, 2021 indicate that the commissioners would fund these positions based off the revenue generated from the property reevaluation set aside for schools. In the 2021 academic year, these additional positions were funded on top of the standard funding formula used by the county to appropriate the operating expense budget for Currituck County Schools. For those following along with the handouts passed out, you can see this on Exhibit A, highlighted in yellow. For those who may not understand how the county appropriates funds to the school district, I would like to share that information with the public. The funding formula used for Currituck County for the past 20-plus years is an equation that uses the previous year per pupil allotment times, the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. The product of these two factors is then multiplied by the projected ADM, average daily membership, sent by the Department of Public Instruction for the upcoming academic year. It is important to note that the use of the Consumer Price Index means that the formula accounts for change over time for the prices paid for a market of goods and services. Exhibit B provides an explanation of the formula as well as an example. The formula works when it is followed as designed. It is unfortunate that this county has not consistently followed the funding formula. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Reynolds, address 2958 Carrottoke Highway, Currituck. I too am a proud member of Currituck County Schools and a lifelong resident. I currently oversee technology testing and the student information system. In August, I'll begin my 28th year as a school employee. As Mrs. Hodges noted, the funding formula has not always been followed consistently. In 1718, the county manager and board agreed to set a 2% floor for the CPI index. In the 2122 fiscal year, instead of using the agreed-upon CPI floor of 2%, the board voted to use the actual 1.4%. That difference of six tenths of a percent equated to sixty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and eighty-six cents in operational funding that the schools did not receive. Then for the 2324 school year, when the CPI was actually 8%, the school district leadership was informed on March 8th by the then-county manager, Ike McCree, that the board would not likely approve the use of the actual CPI in that year's educational funding formula. In that same joint meeting, county finance director Sandra Hill noted that the commissioners had agreed on a floor for the CPI at 2% and that they likely needed to agree on a ceiling as well. So when the CPI was below the agreed-upon floor, the board approved the use of the actual CPI. When the CPI was 8%, the board voted to use a 5% multiplier instead, without an official ceiling being set. In addition to that shortage, the county required the schools to use 700,000 from our own fund balance to cover operating expenses for this school year. For the public, the school district's fund balance is the equivalent of your personal emergency fund savings account to cover unexpected immediate needs. As recently as the Board of Commissioners budget meeting session on June 5th, interim county manager Rebecca Gay stated that the fund balance should not be used for reoccurring costs in your own budget conversations. Yet we were directed to do just that, to pay the bills for this school year. Interestingly, the public was told that the addition of 700,000 dollars made the school's operating budget 13,735,602 dollars, or a 5.3% increase over the previous fiscal year's funding. In point of fact, when you subtract the 700,000 dollars, the actual account appropriation was seventy-two thousand, four, seven, forty-seven, excuse me, 42,700 dollars less than the previous year. Knowing that the educational funding formula uses not only the CPI as determined by the Bureau of Labor Statistics as well as average daily membership, there's an obvious increase to be expected over time as more housing developments are approved. In fact, our student enrollment has grown over 500 students in the last five years. It is imperative that the public be properly informed that the school has only made one request for additional operating funds above and beyond the standard educational funding formula that was in the 2122 school year for the salaries of 12 teachers, 10 teacher assistants, and two and a half instructional coaches, which were intended to meet the unfunded K-3 class-size mandates, as well as the needs of our growing student population. We're simply asking for the educational funding formula to be followed consistently as it was properly designed to fund our schools, parallel to the changes in the national economy, and provide the education our students deserve. Thank you.
Renee Downey.
Good evening, Chairman White, members of the board. My name's Renee Downey, residence, address is 2958 Carrottoke Highway. I too am a lifelong resident of Currituck County Schools and proud graduate of Currituck, proud resident of Currituck County and proud graduate of Currituck County Schools. This year will mark the end of year 25 for me as an educator. Currently, I have the honor of serving as Assistant Superintendent for Currituck County Schools. In the years during and post-pandemic, Currituck County Schools, like all other school systems across the state of North Carolina and country, received an influx of COVID funds, helping to offset the negative impacts of COVID-19 to students across our state. Most of these federal funds were restricted to being spent on addressing student learning loss, health and safety measures, student connectivity to the internet, and improving air quality throughout our schools. In budget discussions leading up to the 2223 school year, Superintendent Lutz acknowledged in full transparency to the Board of Commissioners and county manager that with the influx of these federal funds, the additional funding to support the 12 teachers, 10 TAs, and two and a half instructional coaches was not needed for the 2223 fiscal year and likely not for the 2324 fiscal year. The county did not give Currituck County Schools the funding for these positions in each of the last two years. It would have been fiscally irresponsible for us to have taken that funding and ended up padding the fund balance for the school district. It appears, however, that our act of transparency and honesty has now come back to get us as the county has decided to no longer fund the commitment to our students. If the commissioner's decision to back out of the agreement to fund these positions, rather people, that is, is not disheartening enough, we were not made aware of this decision until May 20th, 2023, at 3:00 PM. We had literally just held an in-person meeting between board chairs and vice chairs, finance officers, county manager and district leadership on May the 6th. At no time during this in-person meeting was there ever any mention of the Board of Commissioners deciding not to fund those positions, or having a meeting in April of 2022 in which they decided they would no longer continue to fund these positions. Yet a document was later produced and sent to us at the district that revealed meeting notes from two meetings on April 11th and April 13th of 2022, revealing discussion about curriculum coaches and the suggestion that, in quotes, "they may not be performing appropriately." Those notes mentioned reducing the allocation for the additional positions by 197,807,000 dollars. Based on the documents sent to us, multiple options for funding the schools were presented to the commissioners to select from, but again, there was never any communication back to us after the April 13th, 2023 meeting that indicated the county would no longer fund those additional positions. If it were the position of the county commissioners in the spring of 2022 to no longer fund the positions granted in the 2122 academic year, why were we not notified then, or even last year, so that we could have adequately planned for the decrease in funding?
Renee, hang on a second. How do you know? How do you know that conversation didn't take place?
We have no records of any written communication between any boards. Can I finish this part, and then you can ask me questions?
No, because you've said several things that, you know, we do have joint meetings, right, between the chair and vice chair?
Absolutely. More now than ever before.
Right. And, but, you know, to say that we didn't tell you we weren't going to fund you at that meeting, I don't make that decision. We, as the Board of Commissioners, have to make that decision. It's not going to come at that meeting. We're there to listen to your request, not to make a decision at that moment, in that moment. So I think it's, it does engender us to say that the board decided at that moment and you weren't told at that moment. When we have to meet, we have to talk.
Absolutely. I'm not questioning that, that you don't make the decision-
Right. So there's going to be a time lag.
We were not notified of any decision of that until we received a communication of meeting notes from April 11th and April 13th that indicated the commissioners decided to vote on option three, which took away the funding for those additional positions. We received that after our April, I mean, May 6th meeting that we had in person, but this was from 2022.
Right. And I'm saying, how do you know that that meeting, there could have been a telephone call between the manager and the school superintendent. They meet for lunch regularly.
And again, you have no proof of that? I have. I have everything that's in writing.
I have no proof, other than, you know, my manager would have reported to the board that, you know, whatever.
And I have the documents that Ms. Gay sent over to us that said it was decided on the April 13th meeting that that had happened.
Right. And it was. It was.
So to continue on, we understand that you have monumental decisions that have to be made with regards to allocating funds to support our growing community. We just can't help but take exception to the fact that there was no communication to us about that decision to no longer fund these positions. When Dr. Lutz had monthly meetings with each of the county managers over the past few years, we've had numerous joint leadership meetings at the table together in an effort to improve communication. As the least economically distressed county in the entire state of North Carolina, it's difficult to comprehend how Currituck County still ranks behind Dyer, Hyde, and North Hampton Counties in base local appropriation per ADM. And once low wealth and small county funding is added into the mix for other counties in northeast North Carolina, Currituck drops to 12th out of 17 in the region in per pupil funding. I hate that public education has become a political weapon used as campaign cornerstones in local, state, and national elections. As the largest employer in the county, the one source the majority of our citizens use for nine or 10 months out of the year, and absolutely one of the largest portions of the local county's budget, we're an easy target. We take the brunt of blame for the, why taxes have to increase, but the reality is, one, we don't control the growth of our student population. Like the famous line from A Field of Dreams, "If you build it, they will come," and they have, and they continue to. And two, the district- And two, the district has not asked for more, other than what's owed based on the funding formula used to appropriate operating expenses for the school district outside of these positions requested and approved in the 2122 school year. All funding has been generated off the formula, not asked. I genuinely want all the students to get the very best from us each and every day in hopes that one day, like me and the others who are here tonight, they will choose to come back to this community and give back. And in education, it's always about the people, not the programs. So I urge the Board of Commissioners to allocate the funds as agreed-upon to support the 12 teachers, 10 TAs, and two and a half coaches. Thank you.
Well, we can-
Who's up next?
Kevin Goan.
Well, we can-
Who's up next?
Uh, Kevin Goines. And I would ask that we lighten up on the applause a little bit. We want to get through this tonight. We understand that you guys are here. We understand that you guys are here in support of what you're talking about. I think that's very obvious from the hundred and some plus people that are here this evening. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Goines, and I live at one-twenty-two Brumsey Landing Drive in Moyac. As the principal of Knott's Island Elementary School, the smallest school in the district, I'm both proud and humbled to address you. Our size might be modest, but our commitments to nurturing every child is anything but. In our school community, we believe that every child deserves the best possible start in life, and we dedicate, and we're dedicated to providing them with the tools they need to succeed. Our staff works tirelessly to meet the needs of our students. One of the most critical tools in a student's educational journey is the ability to read. Reading is the foundation upon which all of their learning is built. Yet increasingly, many of our students face significant challenges in this area. This is where our reading support staff is vital. They're not just educators, they're lifelines, they're mentors, they're guides who help our students navigate a complex world of literacy through focused and intentional reading support that's individualized to meet their need. Preliminary data from this school year shows that Knott's Island overall has outperformed what the state expected us to do this year. Our third grade, which really, if you think about it, that's the COVID year, kids, they're the ones that started, um, they were our weakest readers coming into third grade. We had zero of those students pass the beginning of grade test, and I've never had that happen. But through the supports that we gave them, they grew over one and a half year in reading as a class, as a whole class, all the students together. This, that didn't happen by chance. It happened because of a working team of professionals, a team of teachers, and a team of academic support. Unfortunately, the size of my school doesn't allow us to receive state funding that's essential for some positions. We rely entirely on you guys at the local level to fund those positions. This past year, our reading support assistance that you have funded worked systematically with over thirty students each week for forty-eight weeks. Their dedication and expertise have made tremendous differences in the lives of those children, helping them improve their reading skills and gain confidence that they need to thrive academically. The support from Currituck County Board of Commissioner plays an important part of our success. Without it, we wouldn't be able to provide the individualized attention our students need. We're incredibly grateful for your commitment to our school, and I urge you to continue to provide the support needed as we educate the students at Knott's Island Elementary School and Currituck County Schools. Thank you for believing in the importance of education and for standing with us as we strive to ensure every student, no matter how small the school, has an opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Brittany, is it Bearfield? Did I get that right?
Good evening. My name is Brittany Bearfield. I reside at one-twenty-nine Southern Pine Drive in Moyoc. I'm here today to speak as a community member, as a parent of two students, and as a district employee. I currently work as the MTSS Coordinator for the county, and I want us to understand the why behind the hard work that our TAs do. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports. What you may not be aware of is that the state of North Carolina has required that schools have an MTSS framework in place to meet the needs of all unique learners. Session Law twenty-twenty-one-eight, Senate Bill three-eighty-seven, drives the state-required literacy intervention plan. In this literacy intervention plan, we must outline the differentiated support levels we will provide to the students of Currituck County. This includes not only our core curriculum instructional planning, but the intensified levels of intervention available to every learner in the county. GS-one-one-five-C-eighty-three-six-B requires schools to provide students with individualized reading plans, also known as an IRP, that are developed for any student in kindergarten through third grade demonstrating difficulty with reading development, based on the results of state-mandated diagnostics. The IRP shall be continually adjusted based on multiple data sources as prescribed by the Department of Public Instruction. This data is collected by some of the hardest, finest workers in our educational system, our TAs. Our teacher assistants are one in a million. I stand here and ask for your support in the funding of our backbone of our instructional intervention program by honoring your original commitment to the additional teacher assistance that were requested and approved for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The teacher assistants at every level, excuse me, at every level are boots on the ground closing instructional gaps. DPI indicates that intervention enrichment times must allow for thirty to sixty minutes of intervention time daily for students. The MTSS framework indicates that students receiving support receive intervention in small groups, no more than six at a supplemental level, and no more than three at an intensive level. Meeting this requirement is an impossible feat for a classroom teacher alone. The quality of services would be compromised with the elimination of these positions. These TAs are critical in allowing us to meet the needs of our students and maintain the requirements set forth by DPI. The guidelines for identifying students as having a learning disability have also evolved over the last few years, and Currituck County Schools has risen to the challenge and met these new requirements head-on, thanks to the work of our MTSS TAs and reading TAs. Thankfully, long gone are the days of a standardized test, standardized test and a bell curve determining if we label a child with a disability. It is now required that we provide intervention data at both a supplemental intensive level, as well as conduct multiple operations. Without this data, we're unable to determine eligibility for students who may qualify for exceptional children's services. These TAs provide a lot. They are changing students' lives. They are closing gaps and meeting their needs to help them to continue and grow educationally. The number of students being referred from EC, from MTSS, was thirty percent less this year than it has been the previous two years, thanks to the work that these teacher assistants are doing. On average, two-hundred-and-twenty-three students are served amongst these ten TAs from JP-NAP all the way down to preschool. Due to the incredible work, the number of students with learning gaps has decreased by eighteen percent in just one year. Teacher assistants play a vital role in ensuring that students receive individualized attention and support, ultimately contributing to a more effective and productive learning environment. These teachers assistants have established and maintained some of the most critical relationships with the most challenging students. Struggling students deserve the opportunity to close gaps. I've been proud to play a role in the development and the successful implementation of the MTSS framework in Currituck County, but more or less, I've had the pleasure of working side by side with some of the most dedicated and crucial backbones of our educational system. Not voting to fund the one-point-three million needed to keep our schools operating in the best way possible and honoring your original commitment is you voting to take from the future generations of our county. This would be you, our Board of Commissioner, looking into the eyes of thousands of children, telling them that they are not worthy, looking in the eyes of hundreds of teachers and telling them they are not valued. I leave you with this. When you research Currituck County, they say that it's a great place to live and raise a family. One of the top three reasons that is listed is the education that we provide here. It states that Currituck County has quality schools. The Currituck County School District is known for its strong educational programs and dedicated teachers. Currituck County Schools is also known for its community support for education. I think the show of people today show up and have really been the turnout to let you know that we are serious. We need you to vote for our schools, and we need you to continue to support our backbone.
Good evening, Janet.
Good evening.
Been a while.
Been a while. Janet Rose, two-twelve Pointers Road, Moyoc. I too am a graduate of the Currituck County School System, class of seventy-nine, CCHS. I am a thirty-two-year teaching veteran of the Currituck County Schools. My children graduated from here, and I am currently serving as the Chair of the Currituck County Board of Education. I am very vested in our school system. First of all, I am not here asking you to raise taxes for the schools. Our citizens have seen their tax bills go up about forty percent in the last few years. I'm here concerned with the lack of communication and discussion in regards to the budget for our schools. I've called each of you and shared my thoughts. We are only asking that you continue funding the positions initially funded in twenty-twenty-one, when we had the last property reevaluation. It was decided at that point that you'd put money away from the extra revenue generated for the schools. We do not want to cut positions. We need these people. It's obvious, from what you've heard tonight, they are very valuable. Now, I realize with growth comes the need for extra infrastructure. Apparently, we as a county are not well-prepared for the cost of the growth that we have experienced in the last few years. I'm very concerned with the financial situation of our county. I attended your budget work session, and I heard how we need to add more county positions, we need to raise salaries by four, six, and eight percent, we need fire equipment, we have other needs from the various departments. I sat here in the audience, and I watched you talk with all the people from the various departments, except the people representing the schools. I beg you to please talk with their staff and find out more details if you need them. We're building a new school, and I'm concerned. Will the extra funds be available to open this school and operate this school? It's going to cost more money. Again, I'm not asking you to raise taxes to fund the needs of the schools, but I am asking you to plan well and use your existing revenue avenues that you have so that we can provide the children of Currituck the best possible education. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, I have Debbie Doughty. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Doughty, and I live in Jarvisburg, four-eighty-five Jarvisburg Road. I am also, Janet Rose, a nineteen-seventy-nine graduate of Currituck County High School. I didn't know she was going to mention the year, so I decided to. Also, both my parents were born and raised in Currituck County. My husband and I both graduated from Currituck County High School. I come before you today requesting your consideration in allocating funds to Currituck County Schools to further the success of our students. One way these funds will be used is to continue having instructional coaches in every elementary school, along with teacher assistants and support staff. This team of highly qualified teachers and staff have played a pivotal role in the growth of our students. I was asked earlier this week, what is a coach? Was I referring to an athletic coach? And at the time, I responded, no, not athletic. But after conversation, I thought, that's exactly what our coach has been for us. One teacher's comments regarding our coach is as follows. Our coach has been an invaluable asset to our school community. Their unwavering support for students and teachers is evident in every interaction, whether they're assisting with lesson planning, providing insightful feedback during observations, or offering mentorship. They consistently go above and beyond by modeling lessons, ensuring that best practices are not only discussed, but also demonstrated in real classroom settings. Their ability to analyze data and use it to inform instruction has significantly enhanced our teaching strategies and student outcomes. Moreover, their professional development sessions are nothing short of excellent, engaging, informative, and tailored to meet our needs. Their contributions extend beyond individual support. They play a critical role in shaping the positive and collaborative culture of our school. This year, our school implemented grade-level, monthly planning to map out skills to be taught. Our coach met with our art, computer, music, and PE teachers, and together they created plans to teach these skills in their lessons. Another layer of successful support. In my classroom this year, and I'm a third-grade teacher, I had a student who saw fifty-nine percent growth in reading alone. In my grade level, some students saw up to seventy percent growth. Ninety percent of my students passed the end-of-grade math test. I credit the team effort and support these students received from our coach to our assistants. Assistants we have been blessed with in the upper grades over the past years have been utilized daily for extra layer of support. These assistants worked with small groups, from those struggling in reading and/or math, to either practice skills taught, to take those, or to take those skills to a higher level of understanding. I do want to add, and I didn't have this written down, but I've been thinking about it a lot, the diversity that we have in our classrooms right now far exceed what I ever thought would be when I started. And I started with the school system in two thousand and seven as a substitute. My daughter was young, and I wanted to go into teaching. So I did, and I was very blessed to get a job with Currituck County Schools, because I feel very passionate. And I never would have thought I would be faced with what I'm faced right now, to try to meet the needs of every student in my classroom. And I mean every one of them. And if it weren't for the coach that we have and our assistants, I could not have the data that I have before you today. I truly give them credit for that, and my hard-working students as well. So we greatly appreciate your help to ensure our student success continues in the years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up, I have Chelsea Evers. Eves. Somebody's got to get back to handwriting class. Good evening, how are you today?
Hi, it's Chelsea Eves, one oh-two Whisper Lane, Poplar Ranch. Like many before me, I am also a product of Currituck County Schools in Currituck County. Actually, a few of you have watched me grow up and see me become the person I am today. But I'm an exceptional children's teacher at Jarvisburg Elementary School, and tonight I'm speaking for myself, but I'm also speaking for a dear friend and colleague, Ms. Lila Hannig, who's a kindergarten teacher at Jarvisburg Elementary School and is also a product of Currituck County Schools. Speaking for Ms. Hannig, kindergarten is a lot like Disney World. It's one of the happiest places on earth, but it can also be incredibly overwhelming. You're learning how to be a classroom citizen and letter names and sounds, you're learning how to be a friend and add and subtract within ten, you're learning how to open milk cartons and your own lunch, and that you, in fact, can now read. With the support of our MTSS teacher assistants and instructional assistants, we are able to provide more individualized supports and instruction to children to help them be ready for the next grade level. With education now being a team effort, we have been able to close gaps and send children confident in their abilities and selves. And as a beginning teacher, our instructional coach has been able to provide me support in being a stronger teacher for my students and for my school. This funding has directly impacted me, my professional growth, and the growth of children I have had the honor of teaching. All of these pieces are invaluable to the puzzle when looking at our children's success and future. I say "our" children, because they're not just our educators' children, they're your children, they're your grandchildren, they're everyone in the audience's children. We cannot allow those children to suffer due to lack of funding, as the consequence of doing so would be far-reaching and long-lasting. It is essential that we prioritize the needs of our students and ensure that they have access to the educational resources and support that they need to thrive. We are building a foundation together for which our county can and will continue to stand. Now, in my world, as an exceptional children's teacher, those of you familiar with education know, we talk more in minutes. That's the reality I hope to stress to you tonight. At our school, the doors open at seven-thirty with a dismissal at two-forty, so let's give a buffer and call that about four-hundred-twenty minutes. Then if we subtract specials, lunch, and recess, we're left with approximately three-hundred-thirty minutes of available instructional minutes if a child walks right through the door at seven-thirty, ready to learn. Now, let's divide that by eighteen. What we imagine an average, or what we wish an average class size would be, we get eighteen minutes and twenty seconds for a single teacher and eighteen students. Now, let's be more realistic of an upper elementary classroom, let's say a fourth or a fifth grade classroom, and again, even secondary levels, I know the numbers are even higher, but let's divide that by twenty-six. That's twelve minutes and about forty-one seconds. I know, I know, I didn't count whole group instruction, I didn't calculate how a classroom actually runs, and yes, we don't, as teachers, divide our day by the number of students and then give that student the number of minutes, but this is why there are class-size mandates. And I think you can probably follow where I'm going with this. More people equates to more minutes, more individualized instruction- More people equates to more minutes, more individualized instruction, and more needs met. Without our TAs, without our teachers to lower class sizes for a rapidly growing population that we don't have control over, and other instructional supports, the moments for making Currituck a great place to work and learn dwindle. I know you have a whole county to consider, I know there's a lot on your plate, but we are helping to prepare this county's future, and we can't do it alone. We can't do it without you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Reynolds. I live at 104 Swan Drive in Currituck, 27929. I've been a resident of Currituck County for 14 years. I taught at Charbro, I was the assistant principal at Moyack Elementary, and I am proud to be the current principal at Moyack Middle School. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the impact of rapid residential growth and how it has impacted the schools I have served. Prior to the expansion projects at both Moyack Elementary and Moyack Middle, I saw firsthand the impact of student capacity on the physical space. The much-needed additions allowed for the appropriate distribution of staff and students across the buildings, thank you for that. However, growing student capacity also has an enormous impact on our human resources and ultimately, our level of service. During the 2023-24 school year, Moyack Middle School had 37 registration requests for new students. That is an average of one new student per week. The process of registering a new student requires records requests from guardians and previous schools, resulting in multiple steps over a period of days. Because of the drastic increase in the student enrollment, a significant portion of our data manager's time has become dedicated to the task of registering new students. Like many staff members, the data manager at MMS wears many hats, also serving as the sole front office secretary and lead point of contact for parents. Additionally, when a new student registers from another state as a special education student with an IEP, state law requires that the student meet North Carolina eligibility requirements. This process requires several formal meetings as well as evaluations. Did you know that federal law requires this process to begin within 10 calendar days of the enrollment date for that student? And the full process takes approximately 60 to 90 days. The attention required decreases the time that our special education teachers have available to support current special education students. Of the 37 new enrollments at Moyack Middle School this year, eight students enrolled with an out-of-state IEP and went through this process. New student enrollment has also affected our class sizes. Last year, Moyack Middle School classrooms averaged 27 students, with a few classes instructing over 30 students at one time. This not only impacts the teacher's workload, but also the quality of instruction for individual students. The previously funded additional teaching positions allowed Currituck County Schools to meet the instructional needs of students within appropriate teacher-student ratios. Without those positions, we risk even higher class sizes. I recently saw aerial photos online highlighting several unfinished residential neighborhoods. Enrollment can only continue to increase as a result of these developments. County Commissioners, I am respectfully asking you that when you consider budget decisions for the upcoming school year, you keep in mind the impact of growing enrollment on the North End, on our student and staffing needs, and ultimately, the instruction we can provide to children. Thank you.
All right, next up, I have Jeff Sedoma.
Good evening. Thank you for having us today. My name's Jeff Sedoma. I live at 101 Step Side in Moyack, North Carolina, 27958. It's in District 5, near a stone's throw away from the new school that's under construction right now. We can't wait for it to open. I am a lawyer. I work in Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm here representing only myself tonight, not my firm or anybody, any other parties. I am a husband to a registered nurse, and I'm a father to Catherine, Charlotte, and Maverick. Catherine is eight, Charlotte is six, Maverick is three. Two of the girls attend Moyack Elementary School, and one is in pre-K3 right now in Chesapeake. I came here tonight to talk about specifically my daughters as kind of a microcosm of the challenges that the school system is facing. And I'm going to start with Kate. She's eight, she's a rising third grader, and she has an IEP for reading and math. There are 19 kids in her class, or there were last year in her second-grade class. They have, in addition to the regular classroom teacher, they have one teacher, as I understand, at one teacher for each grade level at Moyack Elementary School that's also like a helper for the kids with IEPs. So she gets taken out of class for some time each day and given extra help to get her learning up to par, let's just say that. My second daughter is Charlotte, she's six, she's a rising first grader, she was in kindergarten at Moyack Elementary School last year. She also had 19 kids in her class. They have one teacher for that class, and then one shared aide, a teacher's aide with another class in the school at that grade level. She's advanced for her age. She frequently described herself as being bored. She's in kindergarten. We were told that she's doing some things at a fourth-grade level. And again, this is not a bad, this is not a reflection of the school district, this is just the way things are, and I understand that. She can't test to get in AIG, which is Gifted and Talented basically now. She can't test for that until the spring of the second grade. So I'm supposed to tell her to just grin and bear it, and there's nothing else that we can do. If there's available space, she can get in AIG in third grade. And right now, in the AIG program, as if I understand it correctly, there's one teacher that covers three elementary schools, and she visits with the different students in each school for a few minutes each week and attempts to, you know, Gifted and Talented, put them in that program. So we're looking at, again, different ends of the spectrum with our kids in the educational program here, and I just really kind of am in shock with the budget proposal. I read through the whole packet, I analyzed the numbers. They changed from the packet that I printed out earlier today to tonight, they're now, it's 83 million, so that's 2 million more than what was in the packet as it was presented online today. The difference in the funding for the schools, if I understand it correctly, is 1.4 million. So overnight, we've kind of got a change there. And, you know, the school districts, as we've heard from other speakers, everyone's very happy that the COVID kids are catching up, that the COVID effect is not lingering, but it's taken a lot of work, it's taken a lot of intervention, teaching skills, and dedicated staff to get these scores up, get these test scores up. And everybody's very happy about that, and I'm just, I'm really struggling to make sense of cutting positions out and still being able to make any kind of progress in the years to come with bringing school scores up and test scores up and success up. And then I hear, you know, we're getting the new school, obviously, and we're going to be, basically, if the budget passes as proposed, we're going to be 25 positions in the hole for the school district. And I look on the website for the school district as a whole, and there's 40 or 50 positions that are open that they can't get even the people to apply for. So something's got to give here, and it doesn't need to be our kids. I would urge you, as I look through this budget that was posted on the internet today or the other day, you know, on page 62, I noticed that the county commissioners earn money for serving as county commissioner. It looks like you earn $15,000 a year for serving as a county commissioner. I'm also noting on page 62 of the budget packet that I have that there's an operating expense that's gone up by $46,000 a year just for the county commissioner's part of the budget. And there's a increase of $46,000 a year for professional services. I don't know what those are. This is just one line item on one huge budget package. I'm not an expert. It's very disturbing to me to have attended one of the joint meetings at the College of the Albemarle, I believe, over near the airport some years ago, and for the people from the school board, and for the people from the county commissioners, to be bickering and arguing with each other and not be able to solve some of these problems that we're facing. I'm dismayed. I don't want to make suggestions to cut other areas of the county budget. I don't think that's a good solution, and I would really urge everybody here to grow the size of the pie when it comes to the budget. Do what we need to do as a county to bring in businesses where they're going to earn sales tax for us. A Home Depot store, on average, and this is 2018 numbers, I looked at it tonight, they make $50 million a year. When we pay our sales taxes at the Home Depot in Chesapeake, that money's going to Virginia Beach, or Chesapeake, or wherever we shop. We can't shop around here and have our money benefit Currituck County. What are we doing to grow the size of the pie? I thank you for letting us all talk. Please, don't make the kids pay the price for inability to solve problems constructively together with the school board. Thank you.
All right, DeWann Craft.
Good evening. Thank you, DeWann. DeWann Craft, 105 Trout Street, Moyack, North Carolina, 27958. I'm here this evening to ask you to fully fund the Currituck County School budget presented to you on May 15, 2024. You've heard lots of information, I had more to say, I'm not going to say that. I was here when this year's budget was presented, and I was also present during the two subsequent meetings where you discussed this year's budget. At those meetings, it was my understanding that your budget includes raises for all or most county employees. I in no way begrudge the employees, and I applaud you for taking care of your employees. I just ask that you place the same importance and the same value on Currituck County teachers and staff, but most importantly, that you place the same importance and same value on Currituck County students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dana Parker.
Good evening. Chair and members of the Board of Commissioners, my name is Dana Parker. I reside at 106 Hammock View Court in Adlet. I am here today as a member of the Board of Education, but most importantly, I am here as a mom. I'm a 25-year resident of Currituck County. I have two daughters who have graduated from Currituck High and a son who is an eighth grader at Currituck Middle. I have always been an outspoken advocate for public education, and as a board member, I have never shied away from difficult conversations. I, like many of you, believe in a system of accountability for our schools. I am here to assure you and the public that that is happening. Our Cognia accreditation that many of us fought for is happening at the end of the summer. Our preliminary test scores show real improvement. In fact, in Math I at the middle school level, we are at 98% proficient. Am I satisfied where we are? Absolutely not. I am, however, committed to continue with the difficult conversations that with persistence will make Currituck County Schools the best school district in the state, because we deserve nothing less. Just as many other county departments are struggling due to growth, our school employees are working beyond their contracts for free to accommodate the increase of the nearly 500 students in the past few years. As a school system, we have absolutely no control over how many students enroll or the services that by law we must give them. We have no control over state mandates. Many would be surprised that the first-grade classes in our county, by state mandate, should have no more than 16 students. For decades, this county has used a funding formula based on the Consumer Price Index. Yet, in a time of rising costs, that formula has been abandoned, and the schools are left to figure out what to do. With the exception of excess COVID funds, traditionally, our schools have been budgeted nearly at 19% of the total county budget. With tonight's change to an $83 million budget, we are now dropped to 17.18% of the total county budget. Keep in mind, the school's 24-25 budget that was presented to you gives absolutely no local pay increase to any of our employees. Our staff continues to sacrifice so that we can do what we need to do for our students. It's often difficult when teachers call and say, why don't we get a pay increase? Why aren't we valued as a county employee that should get 4% or 8%? We get nothing. And personally, this is heartbreaking to me as I see employee after employee cross the border for more funds. Our superintendent himself has no pay increase in this year's budget, and the board is looking at a performance metric to give him merit-based pay and incentivize for every A and B school within the district. We are working as good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. I want to thank each and every one of you for your public service. I know that each of you is intelligent enough to realize that the quality of life we enjoy in this county is contingent upon the quality of education we provide for our citizens. We continue to lose excellent educators, and with the lack of affordable housing, we struggle to recruit replacements. Unfortunately, we can't solve any of that tonight. Tonight, let's just start with square one. Let's start with the budget, a budget that does not even include greater pay for our employees, but does keep us staffed and allows us to continue on the path of improvement. In the near future, I would love that together, the Board of Education and Board of Commissioners could construct a vision for this county with measurable goals that will improve our community. Let's invest in our children because it's the right thing to do. Let's invest because in society, the cost of education is far less expensive than the price of ignorance. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Angel Lasher, 2958 Keratuck Highway, Currituck. I'm here today to just share a letter that was written by Anita Rabino, who was our Currituck County Teacher of the Year and also recognized as the Northeast Regional Teacher of the Year. She was hoping to be here tonight, but couldn't. I do have a copy of the letter for each of you, but I would like to read her closing, even though I'm not going to read her whole letter. Investing in our schools is an investment for our whole community. We draw people into our community with promise of a bright future. In a time with worsening teacher shortages across North Carolina, we will not attract new teachers if we do not provide the schools and staffing for an extraordinary education. I know we are experiencing incredible growth in the upper region of our county, but how will we sustain that growth if we do not provide schools that contribute to that bright future? Families will not move to an area with schools that do not provide their valued children with an extraordinary education. Families will not remain in a community that does not provide the best educational experience for their children. Families will not move, I'm sorry, families will move to places that offer an extraordinary education. Families will move to places that offer the best for their legacy and the opportunity to create a vibrant, sustainable, and innovative community that goes with them. Again, I appreciate your time and ask that the county commissioners consider their investment in an extraordinary education for all Currituck County students.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly Peters.
Ms. Kelly Peters. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. White and Commissioners. I am Kelly Peters, three-one-three South End Road, Knott's Island. I am here tonight as a lifelong resident, as a parent, and as a Board of Education member. It's been a long evening. I know you listen to a lot, so I don't want to repeat it, but I just am here to ask for all of your support and all of your decisions. I know as a board, I appreciate what you do, and you do have to make hard decisions in this difficult time in our economy, but I do respectfully ask that you do all you can for the education and fund us. We, the children's education is very important. We have so many military families moving in here. We win awards each year. We owe it not just to our current citizens, but to all of our new citizens and military. And I just ask for all of your consideration in funding the budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Banks. Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, guys. I'm Jason Banks. I'm, my residence is one zero one Emperor's Alley in, in Cornjut. I'm too, like everybody else, is a, I'm a lifelong resident of Carrituck County. I'm not going to stand up here and beat a dead horse. I think I've heard, heard, heard enough, actually. Thirty years ago, or even fifty, forty years ago, I would never expect Carrituck County to grow as fast as it's grown. I don't think anybody in this room, even y'all, would expect in the last five years how rapid it has grown. It's nobody's fault on this board. It's just Carrituck County is a great place to live. It, it is, and it's going to continue. I don't see it slowing down or stopping at all. With that being said, I've only been on the school board now for about fourteen, fifteen months, and when I decided to go on the school board, when I decided to run, the biggest problem I saw was a lack of communications between the two, two entities. And I have seen that, and this is getting better. It's getting better. But the reason why I'm saying that, Mr. White, you made a comment that when Ms. Dowdy was speaking about the, the positions that were being cut, who said and, and what? Is there any proof of when that happened or not? That's what I'm talking about. There's, there was no communication. And I, I think that's easily proven. Recently, the Board of Education, the office, they received a bill from the county for the school resource officers that y'all agreed to fund. We got the bill for that, and when we, when it was communicated back to the, to the county, they're like, oh, well, we didn't know you weren't supposed to get that bill or not. And I'm thinking, you know, there is a problem. There, there's a communications problem. I'm like Janet, I do not want to see my, my taxes go up at all, period. But we're, we're, we're in a, we're in a mess. The county's growing rapidly. The schools are growing rapidly. I, I've looked at both budgets. I looked at our budget, even, even our, even our superintendent, he was up for his contract renewal, and in his contract renewal, there's a three percent raise he was supposed to get. He walked into our meeting, I hope I can see this. He, he walked into our meeting, and we didn't even ask. He voluntarily said he wanted to remove that part out of his contract. He cannot take that three percent increase that he was supposed to get. So, thank you, thank you, Dr. Luke, for that. And that was no pressure. It was a shot to all of us on the board that he did that. It, it really was. So, they're looking, they're looking to cut corners, they're looking to find the money, and it's just not, it's just, it's just not there. And when I say there's a lack of communication, you know, those positions were, were funded, then they were cut. Well, look, all these people in this room just found out that these positions were being cut. That's why they're here. If they knew these positions were being cut in twenty-twenty-two, y'all would have been here then, right? So, they would have been here then. So, that's why I'm saying that there's, there's a breakdown somewhere, and we all need to come together and work together and try to, try to, try to fix this problem. Those TAs, and Mike, your, your teach, your mother was a, a teacher assistant, we're getting, when these TAs are in the classroom, we're getting a teacher at a price of a TA salary because those TAs are actively teaching. They're engaged with the students, not, not running down the hall like it used to be when we were in school and run down to the copy machine and changing the copy papers, and those days are gone. These TAs are actively engaged with, with our students. So, I'm asking you to please fund those positions, keep them going. Our test scores are, are growing, our growth is growing as far as, as far as academically growth is growing as well. We don't need to stop. We got a long ways to go. When, when COVID stopped everything, we got a long ways to get where we are, but we're getting there. And it's just like government, I've been in government all my life, or all my adult life, anyway. It seems like when, when things start going right, government wants to step in and stop it. For some rea, for some reason, it always seems that way. I saw it in my law enforcement career. When things start going right, something would happen, some politician or somebody would say, well, let's change something. Let's not do something like we've normally done, and it stops that progress. Progress is being made. I just ask you to help the teachers, not the school board, but, but the teachers, to help them exceed in the, the growth of their students. And just thank you for that. And I'd also like to note that it's very intimidating to be in a room full of educators. It's, it's a whole lot easier to be in a room full of law enforcement officers with guns than be, than sit back here with educators. I'm just, I'm just saying. So, so please, please consider it, and let's, let's fix this together and come together as, as a county. The board has always supported the schools, and I'd just like to see that, that continue. Thank you.
Okay. That was the last person I have signed up, so. Did you want to speak, Christine? All right. You know the drill, name and address for the record, please?
Christine Beaumont. I live at one sixty-two Deerfield Trail, Shawboro, North Carolina. I've lived in this county for twenty-nine years. I've had five children come through the public school system. I've had exposure to the elementary school, middle school of Carrituck Middle, and the high school. I've also homeschooled for over twenty years, and I've had children in a Christian school. So, I've actually seen three different types of education. Today, I'd like to advocate for both the teachers and the children, and I'm doing it a little bit different. And my first question that I have for the Board of Commissioners, which I think I already know the answer, did you all use the formula that you've had in place the whole time?
The funding formula or per-perpual allocation that we do every year?
So, the funding has been the same, that you all basically hand the money to the school system, and they get to choose how to use it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you did not underfund them this year. Is that correct?
On our normal allocation.
Based on the formula that everyone.
Based on the funding formula, we did not.
Yes, okay. Well, I'd like to first point out that part of the chaos that's going on in the school system that I've observed is that there is not a curriculum. When I say that and I ask the, the school board members and teachers, everyone answers with the North Carolina Standards of Learning. That is not a curriculum. The Standards of Learning set out by the state of North Carolina is a bullet point list. It's kind of an outline. A curriculum goes day by day, lesson plans, exercises, built-in review. You have to get from point A to point Z by the end of the year, and they outline how you do that. We do not have that in Carrituck. I have not seen that. We used to have that. I was in Shawboro Elementary when they decided to do the Common Core turnover. I watched the textbooks leave the school with the parents. They were passing them out. The school, the teachers then came up to me because at the time, my husband had become a commissioner, and since then, I've had teachers come to me many times and tell me what is going on. They are making up their curriculum for the year over the weekend. Teachers are not trained. Teachers are not, teachers are, I've been told this many times. I just was told that by a husband of a teacher that's currently teaching. They basically, the curriculum instructors do not have a master's degree in, in the curriculum design. There's a special master's and a special doctorates. Maybe they do, but most of them don't. A coach is not a substitute for a curriculum. I'd like to use the example of McDonald's. McDonald's does not sell hamburgers. McDonald's sells a repeatable system.
Christine, please, you know, if you guys want to comment on this outside of this, but we, we let you speak quietly and listen to what you had to say. You may not agree with it, and I can understand that. We don't agree with everybody that comes before us, but please give her the respect of letting her speak uninterrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. As a homeschooler, I used a curriculum that public school used for math that was used in this county for many years and made the county top in the region for math. It's called Saxon Math. Everyone doesn't love it, but it was designed, it would be based on research, test scores prove it out to work, and it turns out that one of the teachers in the high school, because this is how I trained my children, so Larissa was the last child to come through, and one of the math teachers actually was using Saxon Math. I was so excited until the end of the year came when I realized, because I got out the textbook, I just let her go through, and she got to lesson sixty-five. There's a hundred and forty lessons, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty lessons in that textbook. That means they only got through half of a curriculum that was designed with research and proven over decades and proven in this county. I also spoke with a retired math teacher years ago, and he was telling me about how he had the top math scores in freshman math, Algebra One, in the region for twenty years. I asked him, what did you do different? His first response was, do you know you are the first person to have asked me that question? I said, well, what did you do different? He said, for the first two weeks of school, we did nothing but math drills. Kids cannot learn math until they know all their math facts cold. Until they all knew the math facts, we couldn't go forward. They can't comprehend or concentrate on new concepts if they're trying to figure out what seven times eight is again. I took that concept into the elementary school at Central that Matthew and Larissa were attending at the time, and the teacher asked me if I would help one of the students that had already failed the fifth grade. I sat her down, and we began to do math drills, math facts, long division, multiplication. And at the end of the year, they really wanted to hold her back. I didn't quite get her over the hump, but I told her parents what I was doing and why. The next year, she went to Carrituck Middle, and in sixth grade, she won the math award. There are things that are missing in the curriculum because we don't have one. We don't have a curriculum. It's not a bullet point list from the state of North Carolina. That is a list of get this done. The school board originally was designed and put into place as a public representative of the local community's values and interest. To pick a curriculum, we don't have one. Because the school system has fallen so far behind, it's caused a fiscal nightmare because we are sixtieth, are we in the sixties for the state, but we're in the top ten for what we finance as a county per student. So, that's a disconnect. Camden pays less per student than we do, and they use a scripted curriculum, which is the other extreme. I have talked to teachers who came from other states, and the curriculum designers are flooding them with online material. That is not a curriculum. A curriculum is structured, it's proven, it's organized, just like McDonald's sells a system. You don't do their system, you lose your franchise. It's a one million dollar franchise, but they can repeat the process every time. That's what you have to do when you have a mass amount of people to educate. You don't have the luxury of just doing one-on-one. Final thing, I took my daughter to a neuropsychologist. My family has a history of dyslexia, which is not the term they use now. There's ten different aspects. It's complicated. She was my toughest one. And I took her to the neuropsychologist at King's Daughters. I don't remember the teacher, the doctor's name. And I told them my educational philosophy. She was puzzled because Larissa was in the public school. This is my history with the public school with Larissa. And she would start out after I'd homeschooled her or helped her over the summer, she'd be right on target with math. By the end of the year, she was through the floor because of the chaos in the system. So, I told her my philosophy, because she had a special, she had an IEP, and my philosophy is, is that if you taught every child in the school system as if they were dyslexic, that would be phonics. And I think letters is supposed to be accomplishing that. Phonics, grammar, full-blown grammar. I had an eighth-grade teacher tell me that for grammar that year, they were going to use, they were going to learn nouns and verbs. In the, in the Christian school, you learn that in second grade. So, there's a problem. There's a disconnect in the quality of materials that is being consistently shown across the board. If you get a quality teacher, they can fill these gaps, and I bet you they can make up a curriculum over the weekend. Mr. Palametakis was my daughter's third-grade teacher. He's excellent. He was top in his district. He told me, I am making this up over the weekend, Christine, this is crazy. There is no curriculum. So, I've been told by my children's teachers, I've been told by teachers currently teaching, I've been told by teachers who are coming in, and so curriculum designers cannot take the place of a solid curriculum. And so, I just appeal to you to please hold the line because I don't believe finances is the issue. I think we have excellent teachers, but we have, we do not have a curriculum. And the bullet points from the state of North Carolina, the standards of learning, it's not a curriculum. Those are get this done by the end of the year. It doesn't say how, doesn't have a repeated process, it doesn't have review, it's just do this by the end of the year. And so, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Hi, my name is Holly Robertson. I work at Shawboro, one oh six Tilden Court, Moayak. I think Ms. Beaumont said what's so important, quality teachers. That's what it boils down to. I just got into the education system this year. I came from law, twenty years in that, and how do you get quality teachers if you're fighting over funding TAs? You, everybody can go over the state line and double their income. Quality teachers are key, but you guys, you guys are the ones who can get teachers in your schools. But you have to be able to fund your TAs. You have to make it something that's attainable for them. Without that, you're not going to fund anything. Everybody's going to leave our county. That's just coming from me. First year, and I did graduate from Carrituck, though. I had great teachers, but I see it every day. I had many people I went to school with, they're teachers now. They say, Holly, don't go into education. Don't do it. You're crazy. What are you thinking? I love kids. I'm not in it for the money, but I'm here to tell you, people have to make a living. And without you guys providing a reality for these people to be in a classroom, to educate these kids, whether or not what she said is true, you have to provide the people. If, if you don't have the people, then you're not making anything. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Okay. We have, that's all we had sign up this evening and heard from a couple extras. At this time, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we'll stand at recess. It's probably going to take about fifteen minutes to shuffle this many people through the bathrooms. I'm sure there's a few people that need to go into the restroom. So, we'll stand at recess for a few minutes, and we'll be back. All right. Back in session again. Turn my mic on before I get yelled at out the window over there behind you guys. Thank you all. First of all, thank you to everyone that showed up tonight and for your comments, and we obviously had some discussion as everyone was filtering around, and we're going to discuss this further and not bring this to the floor for a vote tonight. So, we'll be leaving this, this agenda item open as basically what happens. Public comment is now over. Now, it's deliberation for us as Board of Commissioners on the budget and all that it contains. And with that, Commissioner Owen Etheridge has a thought on proceeding with that, and is going to put that in the form of a motion this evening.
Mr. Chairman, in light of what we've heard tonight and the opportunity for us to have further discussion, I'm going to move that we can meet again next Monday night in a special session for a vote on this budget.
Okay, and.
I'll second it.
Well, we need to pick a time.
Oh.
So, from a staff perspective, maybe take a second, look at your calendar, maybe next Monday, what you got going, make sure.
We can't do it Monday morning.
Well, no, in the afternoon.
In the afternoon, like prior to five PM or?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
I've got a Zoom meeting.
You got a what?
I've got an election Zoom meeting.
Where?
What time?
At four to five.
Where?
Why don't we do it, can we do it at five?
Five o'clock?
What, what day we talking about?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, yeah, yeah, okay, Monday's fine.
Yeah, I was just trying to be respectful of the staff's time, too, and not have them here late Monday, so.
We could get three.
Get her done, bud.
Three o'clock. Could you guys do three?
I can do, you name the time, three o'clock.
Okay, how about that?
Do three.
Anytime's fine.
All right. Great. So then, so that would be three o'clock Monday. We'll come back and have a special meeting to deal with this agenda and.
I'll second his motion. I'll second his motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from the board?
Just, just wanted to mention that, you know, I did appreciate everybody coming up and talking, and there was some, there was some comments made tonight that, that made me think a little bit. So, yes, I'm
Mr. Chairman, I want to say one thing about the funding formula. I designed that funding formula back in 1995, and the CPI was not to be the standard, but be a guidepost that we would look at each year as we went forward.
And, and, you know, there were many comments made about that this evening, and I think it's important for everyone to understand, when I came on the Board of Commissioners seven years ago now, the Consumer Price Index was like one or less than that. And the schools were having a hard time counting on that allocation of money coming in. So I suggested we set the floor at two, so that at a minimum, you could always know that that money was going to be there. And, and we have held to that. And no one, I think, saw an eight or nine CPI. There's just no one that could predict that. Maybe you could if you dumped $2, $3 trillion on the economy. Actually, probably that would happen. So, but in fact, it did happen. And at one point, we, we just couldn't swing that much of an increase. So we said we can do five this year. I mean, that's, you know, we had to be reasonable and work within the constraints and, and thinking about the fact that we do have to fund putting a new school in. We added two cent in, Janet mentioned that. That, that money was there. We put two cent in when, when, when we did the tax revow in anticipation of opening a new school and having to have to fund extra needs. If memory serves, there are things that are not funded the first year when you open a new school. There's teacher positions, there's coaches, there's other things that are not funded until the second year. So we were planning on that as well. So there has been forethought and future planning and having to deal with those things by this board and through joint meetings with the school board itself. So, again, thank you all for coming out this evening. It's been a long time.
Can I say one thing? I would say, too, this board does support the schools. I want them to know that. I mean, when everybody came last year with all the crazy events in the world with the, I'm not even going to say the, the word, but when bad things happened at schools, this board stepped up and we funded six SROs at the elementary school, which they've worked out amazing, filled in 40 times, but it's fine. I mean, like I said, and I see what goes on at the school every day and the staff, the interaction that they have with the kids, not just from our guys, but we do have a lot of great people. I say it all the time. Our county attorney, she knows. My word amenities, we have a ton of amenities in this county. But like I said, this board does support the schools. And I mean, like, not just the board. Chairman White donates thousands of dollars a year to the summer camps for the kids, for kids that have lived in this county their whole life, that have never been to Corolla, they've never been on the beach, on the sand. My company, my wife's company, I mean, other commissioner payment, you know, every, I mean, we support the schools. So, I mean, you know, we have thick skin. You got to have thick skin to do this job. But like I said, we do support you and, and respect you and everything, like I said. And Jason Banks hit it, hit one thing on the head. There does need to be better communication. And it gets like great, and then it goes down a little bit, which everybody gets busy and things happen. No, no gig at interim county manager Rebecca Gay, because she's all over it. She's doing a great job. But like you said, it's, there is, there's some disconnect a little bit. It happens because everybody's busy. So.
And he, all right. Well, we have, we have a motion and a second on, on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, we will continue this matter until next Monday.
At 3:00, right?
3:00.
3:00.
We don't have to be gone by quarter to four.
Y'all don't have to leave.
Right? There's other stuff.
Getting used to looking at everybody out here.
I'll have my phone, so if you need the, my two cents or, that's the only thing I'm willing to do.
Next up is an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, Division 13 on the opioid advisory board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance in front of you is to add the opioid task, or the opioid advisory board. That is something that the opioid task force, that was an idea that they came up with, and it was part of the resolution that you all passed, I guess, last meeting or whenever that was. And the purpose of the opioid advisory board is to develop and implement a plan to carry out the recommendations of the opioid task force in the expenditure of opioid settlement funds, report advisory committee activities to the Board of Commissioners, and perform such other duties as may be authorized or directed by resolution of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have two things. What, what I would hope is that we could get all the appointments. And so I will, of course, take, love to hear some feedback from everybody about who is on there. As I said in my commissioner report, I have had a lot of people from the advisory board reach out to me. Not the, but the task force reach out to me. And I would love to get them in place and do them as a slate and then set the first meeting, if that's possible, just so we can all be on the same page the very first meeting. And then I would also humbly request to be the representative on the task force, I mean, on the advisory board, getting them back.
Does anyone else want to sign up or challenge for?
No, she signed me up. She signed me up in arm wrestle. She signed me up and didn't ask me.
So, did you say a staggered slate? It should probably be
The way the ordinance is written is there will be a stagger. There, there will be four that have a two-year term and three that have a one-year term. But if we can all start, have them all
Yeah.
All right, that's, that's all.
Not your motion?
We could send an email to who?
Right, if you have suggestions, I'd really like to get those at our, our middle meeting in July.
Make the motion.
A second to that?
So I move for approval.
All right.
I'm sorry, a second to that?
A second to that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd hope not. All right. Next up, Commissioner Travel. Commissioner Owen Etheridge and Selena are going to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference in Forsyth County from August 7th to 10th, and we need to let them go do that.
Okay, let me just say, the seventh is an opioid meeting about the, the new funds. The, the conference is actually the 8th through the 10th, but the seventh is a meeting where we will get updates on the new settlements that are coming down the pipe and some training opportunities. So I humbly request to go to that.
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is board appointments. We have, Ms. Jarvis has an appointment to the College of the Albion Board of Trustees.
As many of you know, the Board of Trustees has undergone a dramatic change thanks to the General Assembly. We are increasing our positions from one to two. The governor no longer gets appointments. The senate gets appointments, the house. It's very complicated. Emily Walker has served as a governor's appointee, and I humbly request because of her dedication to COA and the way she has hit the ground running that she be appointed for the second position of a two-year term to the Board of Trustees for the Currituck County Commission.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next up is, well, we're going to pull out the, we're going to step in front of the consensus agenda with fireworks discussion. And I don't know what page it's on in the consensus agenda.
60 on the PDF version.
Yeah, 60.
Okay. So we have, I guess, maybe the attorney would be better to discuss this and the, my, my opinion.
Yes. So the general statute that governs the use of pyrotechnics is 14-410. And it basically says, just a condensed version, that it's, in pyrotechnics, you can display fireworks only if all three of these are met. So it's not an or situation. All three have to be met. Number one, the exhibition use or discharge is at a concert or a public exhibition. So the statute goes on to say, a concert or public exhibition is a fair carnival show of any description or public celebration. That's the only definition we're given, which is a little subjective, but that's how that is defined. So that's number one. It has to be a concert or public exhibition where this takes place. Number two, the individuals who are handling the fireworks, they have to be fully licensed, fully trained under Article 82A of Chapter 58 of the General Statute. So that's where it lays out all of their requirements for licensing and training. And then number three, this board approves it. So even if, say, the first two are met, the board can still decide not to approve it if they don't want to. So all three have to be met in order for you to approve this resolution before you tonight. That resolution is for the use of fireworks at 145 North Indian Town Road. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the event is for an anniversary party. It says it'll be a public exhibition. I'm not quite sure. I would be very curious to know how this event is being made public.
Do you want me to discuss on that? I was, I was the commissioner that was reached out to, I guess, probably first. It's a 60th anniversary celebration for Jimmy Farby Jr. and Diane Farby. They were planning on doing one, didn't have anybody to, to do it. The same guy that's doing the county, July 4th fireworks in Corolla, who's licensed, sure, trained, and all that stuff, reached out and wanted to do it. So I talked to him after I talked to the county attorney as well as the chairman. And basically, they said that if it was a private event, we couldn't do it because of the general statute. So they're advertising it on social media. Anybody, if you're watching it at home, you want to watch them. It's, they got what, 300 acres?
Somebody wants to celebrate their 60th.
60th anniversary can
400.
Can show up.
Okay.
400 some acres. Feel free to show up and watch it. They're fine with it. And it's on social media, so.
So what's the event, the fireworks or their anniversary?
It's a celebration of their anniversary.
So everybody's invited to their anniversary party?
Yep. So come on, Kitty.
How are they going to advertise?
Facebook, social media.
Church bulletin.
Owen's flying a plane with the
I mean, there's no stipulation how you
Banner behind it.
No, there's not.
That's, that's the one caveat to this. And discussing it earlier today with, with Megan is that what makes it, you know, public? And, and there's no restriction on advertising. Yeah.
Yeah, the statute does leave room for interpretation on what is public. Also, I, I'll say that they more than likely will need a special event permit as well pursuant to the UDO.
They'll be calling tomorrow morning.
So, okay, so, dummy me, the process guy. So how did, did they apply with the county for this?
I don't, I haven't seen an application.
Here's how it happened. They were doing an event. He found, somebody found out about it. Wetzel does, Kevin Wetzel, oh, he's got a great first name. He said he wanted to do the event for him. They have fire sta, fire department on standby, all the stuff, the insurances, everything, the checks and balances. Somebody was, I mean, I'm not saying that they're breaking the law, but somebody was probably going to do it anyway. So I would rather have A, B, C, and D checked in a row and the safety precautions. Somebody's licensed, insured, has all the training. So that's when he reached out and said they were going to do it. They reached out to the Farbys and said, hey, we'll do your show. It's not, it's not a inexpensive project to do. If somebody, if, you know, where, if we had 50 of them in a year in the county, I mean, this, probably $10,000. I mean, for a fireworks show for 20 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes, I believe is how long it is. That includes the material. So he's basically reached out, and there were some emails, and myself and the county attorney, Megan spoke about some stuff and so forth and so on. So I talked to Mr. Farby as well as I believe Commissioner Etheridge did, and said, look, if you're going to do this, it can't be done unless it's considered or deemed a public event. And he said, anybody can come and watch it.
So they won't turn anybody away?
It's 400 acres, three to 400 acres.
I'm just saying, so they won't turn anybody away and make a show, come and celebrate their event with them if they want, correct? Is that what you're saying? They're going to advertise on social media. Okay.
Yes.
But the point that I'm trying to bring up is, I mean, I love fireworks. Some, I like them even better when they're legal, right? Kevin, I know you and I have been at others. The, the point is, the fireworks people shouldn't be asking for this to get approved before the Board of Commissioners. This, and maybe we're pressed for time or whatever, but I would have liked to have seen a request from Mr. Farby saying, hey, we would like to do this event and would like the county, the Board of Commissioners permission, you know, authorization to do this per, you know, this. And, and maybe it's because we don't have a process in place that we can say, well, this is what you got to do. But I feel like it's us pushing this, not the applicant.
They, they did apply for a permit. I received a text message while we were sitting here. They did apply for a permit.
Through Tuesday.
For a special event permit or for the pyrotechnics? Because I haven't seen any kind of application for the pyrotechnics.
The planning department. I got a text.
For the special event permit, okay.
For special events?
Yes.
Okay. So I think, Paul, your point is that if going forward, we should, we should have the applicant come before us to ask permission of the board.
There's no requirement of that.
Because, because as a
I mean, not, it's, 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 it's not inconsequential that there could be a fire or anything, right?
But, but that, and exactly how is it a public event, right? Saying they got 400 acres, come hang out in your cornfield or whatever.
It's being advertised on social media. They've ever, going to advertise it in their church bulletins. It is publicly advertised.
We just advertise it here.
And whether they need a special event or not, we let other people apply for permits under the auspices of the owner of the property.
Well, right now, I just asked Megan, and it doesn't specifically say that the owner has to do it.
Oh, it doesn't.
The, the statute says the display operator has secured written authority from the county Board of Commissioners.
We could always tighten it up later if we need to, but.
My, my bottom line point is, and again, I don't, I'm, I'm fine with it. But, but to me, we need a little more than hearsay, right, from two commissioners, or at least two, I don't know, that, well, they told us blah, 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 and it's going to be blah, blah, blah. It's got to be, it's got to be more refined than that.
Yes, I agree.
He did apply. Kevin applied for the pyrotechnics permit.
We got that part. But it's, it's easy enough to say, we need, we need to know that A, B, and C have been checked off, and what's your plan? What are you doing? And that, and that puts it out to the public, right? You can come forth before us and say that I'm doing this as a public.
And if they violate any of it, I guess we can write them off.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval of this.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yay.
One no. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Any other comments, questions, or concerns with other parts of the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can I have a motion to, I think we're done. Yep. Can I have a motion to?
Send move.
Second. Thank you.
Now we're having closed sessions.
Oh, we can't, I'm sorry, that's right.
We got to go to the special, we got to go to the special meeting.
I need you to rescind that. I have to, I want to recess the, I need to, who made
the motion?
He made it. I second.
All right. I need you to rescind your motion to adjourn.
Send move.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and move into a special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority for budget amendments. And I'll look at those Saturday morning. Any comments, questions, concerned on anything with the Tourism Development Authorities? And this is, this is approval of their, Rebecca, can we approve their budget outside of our regular budget, since we may amend our budget?
No. So we can go ahead and proceed with the public hearing this evening?
Okay.
And then?
Vote on it then at the next meeting.
Correct.
All right. So we have a budget amendment that I will move for approval on the budget amendment itself.
I second it. Or just Kitty beat me.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we will move into the public hearing for the Tourism Development Authorities' annual budget for 2425. This is a public hearing with public comment. I have no one signed up. It doesn't appear to be, well, there's one person left in the audience.
Jan?
There's two, Janet. Okay, you're good. All right. At this time, I will close the, the the public comment portion of that, and we need to move that right to Monday, next Monday at 3:00.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, you'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move the actual adoption of development to Monday's meeting.
We can have it adopted today?
Owen's second.
We cannot.
Because we haven't adopted our budget.
No, because there may be a, yeah, the, the, yes.
Anyways, I made the motion to move it to Monday.
Thank you. Owen seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, can I have a motion to adjourn the TDA? Thank you.
Second.
Catch that, Leanne? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, at this time, I'll open the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board. We have budget amendments again for that.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. I will second that. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, we have a public hearing and possible adoption of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District annual budget for fiscal year 2425. And again, we have public comment, and I have no one signed up. I'm guessing Janet didn't care about that.
She was just saying she didn't care about that.
At this time, I will close the public comment portion of that, and again, we need a motion to move that to next Monday, the 3rd.
Moved.
Second.
Kevin is the mover to move that?
Selena's the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to adjourn the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I will move us back into the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and I'm going to move to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11 to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the matter of Judith M. Ayers versus Currituck County Department of Social Services. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right.